Hello beautiful people, we are back here at the Jackson Streaming Emporium. We ain't doing music right now, instead we're doing Blaze Blue. Which will be interesting, so we're booting that up, I have controller. So... We're gonna be looking at a certain... well, let's get this... Salty EU is back with Blaze Blue. We had the beginners tournament for the first time this year, last week, it went great. The people on comms did a great job. I got to watch the end of it, which was nice, because wanted finished... Well, no, the beginners tournament ran long essentially, because there was a lot of people, it was awesome. But yes, Salty EU, the Tuesday night is half Blaze Blue, uh, Blaze Blue one week multiple the other. And this week it's Blaze Blue. So we're gonna get in here and we're gonna study some blazing blue so we can get ready. Yep, just got the ping in Discord, it is now confirmed that I am definitely on for commentary tonight. Nice, and I'm gonna be on there with Lazarus, my homie who knows a lot about Blaze Blue, Dashgrade, he's good at that shit. But, I also wanna be, and I'm here to learn. And, there's one character who's very complicated and very good, whom we need to study a bit. Because I don't know enough about this lady. So we are gonna... Start off by just going through her stuff, and then we're gonna dive deep. Because I don't think this will be just, yeah, we're gonna do her special moves and stuff like this, we're gonna have to kinda go deep on this. Because she in particular is a very... Uh... Complicated character. Tutorial mode, I am quite tiny down here in my little hole. Okay, actually, let's... Okay, um... I just did so I couldn't move it, um... Yeah, uh, transform, send her horizontally. Yeah, I realize it's a bit of a wide homie, uh... Actually, let's, uh... Transform, edit transform. Nice, that's a bit more... And now we just send her horizontally again, and that should be a lot better. Because we don't want to fill too much stream, but I still want you to be able to see me down here, I'm very cute. Um... Character specifics, now... We're gonna dive into this bitch, Izanami, right? We've had a look at her drive before, in the document, right? And it's, uh... It's interesting. Her drive is cool, but it's actually kind of not the most important part of her kit. So when it's deployed, she cannot block, but she'll be able to use the thing as projectile. We're using the... She has no recovery time. Press neutral D to recall it. Uh, yeah. So what's important is one, this movement? Right, this movement is gonna be partly. So deploy, jupe. Recharge jupe. So that's her stuff with that. Overdrive. So while in overdrive, she can use these like D-moves. When like, even if she's not, you know... In the shape. I don't know, she seems wild. Um... Well, that, like, that's all good and all, right? But, that's not gonna be why we're diving into her Izanami, she's... She... Yeah. Exodus Arc, two modes, a normal mode where she buttons a follow-ups. Oh yeah. Because that's just how we describe it. So, let's have a look at her thing before we go into the specials. So like, offensive powerhouse with a lot of stuff. Calm neutral game zoning, once she gets in. So she has a special like grab, command grab zoom, but what, Jesus Christ! So yeah, she can, she has to float. So she has defensive options that are kind of weak. Yeah, due to the thing, she... So she has a thing that gives her... That basically does, she don't take damage, which is the... Where is it, six... What the fuck are you? Yo! Damn, three and stuff, okay, okay, damn, she has some good moves here. Um... So yeah, the shield of dreams, the DPD. Uh... That's like, she has a ripcage, right, where she doesn't take damage anymore, and it like drains your barrier? Which is really wild, because you can just like kind of force her offense. Um... So we're gonna kind of struggle to get in on this lady, like to explain her. So let's just quickly refresh how the... Bang, no, that's just that. Um, so yeah, drive to terror and then, okay, that's how we do that, good. Let's try and like go through her specials and like... Slowly figure out, but like, it's gonna be hard. Um, which is why we're doing her now, uh, because I... She fascinates me, she's a very... Difficult character, and like, I think we're gonna have to like... Watch some videos about her. Uh, maybe, because she's very weird. It's like guilty here, you know, right, where it's like, well, that's her specials, but that's not really what's important about her. Yeah. So what special do we have? Okay, so this is levitation. Oh, the higher you levitate... The shorter it lasts. And then there's the flash before it expires, yeah. Yeah, so that's the first thing. Unique movement ability, I'm not sure, ghost peak, what the fu... Okay, that's just with projectile, um... Uh... That's like unique movement... It's, instead of a, uh... Yeah, let's, I'm not entirely sure what we do with that, so... Ghost, peak strike, okay. Um... Otherwise mostly used in combos to add damage. Check tile. Uh, yeah. I'm gonna add dinosaur, because that sounds fun. Extend combos, that, yeah. So again, that wasn't the thing I knew. Low registering, ranging attack, even using well... Interesting, so... Yo what? That's like a teleport forward, and then hits mid. Is this, fucking poses the same? Okay, it looks like the startup is like weirdly different. Wha- This is F-dob! Okay, so... What the fuck? That's actually fucked up! Uh... So yeah, you kinda wanna spot doesn't hit her out of it, it seems. What the fuck? This character just gets more fucked up the more I look at her. Uh, 214... A/B. Right? Yeah, A is mid, is low. Okay, corner combo 2. Okay, so fatal counter. Uh, it's just the other one also. No, it doesn't sound like it. Yeah. A fatal counters, and it's mostly used as a corner combo 2. B is just fucked up though! So B has three more frames of... Startup, way more risky though. Oh my god. So in special has a hurt box while descending. B, yeah! Works while floating. That's really F'd up. Jesus Christ. Um... Axol floating. It's a... Yeah. Yeah, can be beaten... Can be, uh, mashed out of. Because yeah, that's like 28 frame startup, so it's like... If we just like take ash real, because he's my boy, like 5A. Yeah, that's 6, yeah, yeah, jupe. Yeah, yeah, we can fucking mash that, so... That's an important part of that. Uh, OBS needs to be open. Uh... To be, uh... Minus 9. Depending on... How late it hits. Um, great. You saw that smooth, smooth shield there? Just paste in my Twitch link. Okay, yeah, so... Distant affection is a throw. Wait, what? It cannot be throw escaped if your opponent is either reeling from an attack or taking damage. Okay, so it's a command grab, essentially, if the throw is successful. No, sorry, I got a... Okay, so you can... What the fuck am I not? Okay. Yo, I didn't realize she had like a main grab. What the fuck? Uh, okay. Can air grab while in float? Aha, yeah, yeah, of course. Uh... Yo, it ends short like, yo, 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 yo. That's how, okay, so that's one of the ways to end that. Unhead. Oh my god. Why is this lady this fucked up? Yo... Hold down the C button. Oh yeah, she also has a great oki tool here, so like if you... So if I understand correctly, like if you get knocked down, right? Oh, that's why, okay, it's half circle, yeah. Of course she has projectile, okay, that makes sense.
Yup.
That makes fucking sense. What the, why is this character? What is this character? What the fuck? Yo... I am so glad I haven't played against a good Izanami. Shovel. Um, yeah. It's still, no, no, no! It's active while she's charging it? I assume it is. What the f... Yo! Oh, it's back. Oh my god, so you can do it? Can you like levitate? Okay, no, you can't do it while you're levitating. What the fuck? What? Why does this lady have all this? Okay, I don't know what that is, but that's a fast ace kick. Arms of sympathy. Man... Uh... Attack, stall, like... Stall's momentum. And solo level into... Levitate. Uh-huh. Yep, that's definitely a thing she can do. Thank, I just needed some barrier. Oh my, okay, yeah. Yeah, blowing stuff, okay, that's fine. Yo, what the fuck is this? Oh, yeah, and you can do this while you're in active mode, so you can use the fucking... Thing, your bits. Yeah. So you can use the command grab, or the like, this move here, bulwark to end it as well. Oh, you can use overdrive to endanger, that's hilarious. Um, stake of supremacy can also... She has three fucking supers? Oh my god, okay. Yeah. That's lady. Shield of dreams. 6U3B. Like auto guard on everything. No protection against throws, burst and unblockables. Still vulnerable to... Is that a high school model? Vulnerable. Burst, throws... And unblockables. Okay. Uh... Drains barrier, so needs to... Be ended using... Bulwark. Distant affection or... Stake of supremacy. Stake of supremacy. Bulwark. 60TP while shield is active. 15 frames of invul. Um... Unhead. Against burn head. Normal way to end shield. Okay, okay. Droplet. That used the magatama, okay? That used thing. Her bits. Powerful change in behavior by... She has this fucking like... She's so hard. Okay. So that's uh... That's two separate things, droplet. Okit, okay. Yes. Uh, that's... 4, 1, 2, 3, 6D. Okay, so you can't block until they return. Okay. Tracking move, don't really... Know how to describe that else, uh... Can we hold down to keep it forward? Powerful oki tool in active mode. Oh yeah, cause you can keep a distance. Oh, we need to... Active during charging, leading to some wild combos. Yeah. I assume we just hold up and just like the opponent is on top of you and dying. Uh, yeah. How the fuck is this... Every Blazed Blue character is so fucking deep. Okay, that's a pretty cool move. Okay, so this is just more hits in the OD drive version. Carry. Distortion drives. Stake of supremacy. 2v6, 2v6B. Um... Sanami's only real reversal. Don't know why you wanna... End the thing in there, but apparently... Um... Jesus Christ, we're gonna... Okay. Then we got the next one off. Half vitality is a throw, it can only be escaped... If the opponent, yeah, so if they are in hit stun, oblock stun. Yeah, yeah. Yo, what? So essentially you stop time on attack, okay? Okay, and OD lasts longer. That makes sense. Uh, immediately after superfluous, uh... You can hit a second one? That's hilarious. Uh... I don't know, man. How are of... Me kill this? These names? Uh... Time stop, command grab, shrug emoji. Uh... Oh fuck, we're gonna have to do 720 on camera? Fuck, that's not great. I'm upgraded those. Oh fuck. I did it. Okay, so this is the like same, but also with overdrive, okay? Okay, so it's unblockable. Yeah, it has fucking counter hit state during entire 2 seconds of startup. Yo. I assume this is just like hits fucking full screen. Yeah. Um, yeah. Cheat, um... Yeah, it's... Um... Melancholy. Death. We usually don't write much about the arc drives for exceed XL right? Like for Astraio. Yeah, it's just full button. Yeah. Astral, shoot. Yo, what the fuck is this input? Sorry, what? Uh, 1, 6... 3, 2, 1... 4, 3... D. Uh... Easy 2 combo into... That's good. Yo, what the f- We're not gonna be able to input this. Yeah, this is just exceed XL. Yo. That's honestly really cool. What the fuck is this input? Down. That's a weird fucking input. Is that like pretzel input? Okay, that's real cool art though. Like, that's really cool? What the fuck is that input? Uh, okay. So what I found out about Isanami is that she's fucked up, um... Strategy, maybe? Fireball, wheel, laser, active mode, rib cage, fast fall. Yeah, yeah. Mm-hmm. Bulwark, yeah, conserve superiorium when it's danger state. For sure, by pushing into the bits, forcing to block by setting up stuff. What the fuck? So you can like kind of... Zone? And then go in, and you can actually just get in with the rib cage. Jesus. So, multi-hitting moves run through deep rib cage because like every hit drains barrier. She can't block during active mode, that's smart, yeah. Very safely and wait for her to drain barrier. Watch for 2B, it has extremely low hurt box. Yeah. 2, 1, 4B is quite minus on bug, yeah, and no meatless reversal, yup. What the fuck is that 2B? Yeah, okay, that, yeah, yeah. Okay, uh, can we like... Matched it, there's like one... Like keyboard blazing, there we go, there we go, um... I don't really care about the players, I just, uh... Can I like... No, no, no. Yeah, any character, let's give me Isanami. Oh, okay, so, Supershine, Nemo's Max. Sounds great. Now watch, oh, you can just ju- Yo. Okay, so... Shout out to Adrian Defiel Martinez for having this up. So, this guy is... Playing the bang and going against Toshigami who is a good Russian Isanami player. So what the fuck is he doing here? So going back and into active mode to try and like... Treading with this bits. He's in the air, going over here to get in. In the air for mix. Goes under with 2, 1, 4B. Okay, dashes under, yeah, he's currently just being very defensive, gets thrown, okay. Okay, here. Nice. He's in the corner here, and then yeah, burst to get out. There's an active mode a lot for the movement and like for the projectiles here it seems. Oh, gets ahead in active mode. As a pretty junky combo. Here we go, we see the lasers into the fireball and the rib cage setup for oki. Waiting for him to come down. Going down to skull, 2B there. Oh, beautiful backdash. Okay, okay. Blocks low mix here. What is they currently looking for? Yeah, just waiting up. Has rib cage, can just go and opens up. There we go, that's an overhead. And that's the finish, okay, okay. Gets hit, is poisoned, okay. Again, I know little bangs, so like that's not the part I'm worrying about. A bang is cool as fuck though. Bang is very cool. Okay, nice. Who side which combo? Has rib cage, is in active mode. Yeah, fireball knockdown. Yup, in with the orchid there. Nice. Okay, oh, 2B in the air, that's high. Jesus, Isanami is so fucked up. Gets a hit with the skull, there's a burst from demo. Oh, beautiful move there. Not sure, but that was a pretty good entry, yeah. So, 5A, 5B... 5C, 5CC, yeah. 2A, 2B, 2C, 2CC. Oh, the 6A, that's the kick upwards, 6B... Is a jumper, that's why there's an overhead, 6C hits low first and overhead second, yo. And then 6CC is all... 3C is low poke. Yeah, J, JB, JC. J2C. Okay. So that's 4, that's 4D, 6D... 2D... 3D, so that's the same but aimed a bit more upwards, 1D is aimed a bit more down, okay. She's, she's hard to figure out. Yeah, yeah, there's one more game here, we can dug in, then we're probably gonna find another one. And that's probably it for the study session, honestly, Jesus, Isanami is... The bonkers. Okay, here we go again. You? Yeah, again, starting out very defensive, like zoning here, trying to like... Wants to hit with the bits, right? Oh, what the fuck was that? What the fuck was that? He's shooting the bits downwards, what the fuck? What the fuck? Like, she just straight up shot the bits downwards? So that's in active mode? What the fuck was that? I have actually no clue what that was. Yeah. It's true, knock my boots. Okay, there you took him. Yeah, knockdown, it's knockdown here, into active mode. And oki, has rib cage, just going through, doesn't care. Overheads and yeah, using the... Counter assault to go back now? No, like a Hoshigami, yeah, Hoshigami is in danger here, so it's just getting rolled, okay. Yo, honestly? I think that's, uh, that's what we can do for now, holy shit. Okay, Isanami is a very deep character, I, yo... I need to watch more. And I need to do that when I'm not as tired as I am right now, holy shit. Yo, she's an interesting character, well... That's it for now, that possibility is put study session, on just Isanami, um... I'll be on later today on Salty EU's BBCF tournament. Along with Lazarus and will be in commentary and talking about Blazblue, and it'll be a joy, I can't wait!